No, I was late.
We'll call the Newport City Council meeting to order for Monday, July 22, 2019. It's actually 6:35 PM. All members of the city council are present. Others include James Johnson as City Clerk Treasurer and Laura Dogen as City Manager. The next item will be to approve the minutes of July 8, 2019, and I would entertain a motion.
Salute.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded to approve the minutes. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing that, others in favor say aye.
Aye.
Poes. Ayes have it. Motion carries. The next was public comments, comments by members of the public. No one had signed up for this evening. But before I go on, I just want to, I'm sure everybody probably read it in the paper, but just wanted to let everyone know that we received an AARP community challenge grant in an amount of $24,172.35. And just so that everyone knows, since 2018, we've received over $597,000 in grants. So that shows that the work that's being done by NVDA, NCIC, the city manager, all the department heads is paying off. And so a lot of it will be going to good projects in the community. And so that's good to know. All right. Next on the agenda, number four, is Chitting and Solid Waste District presentation. We have Executive Director Sarah Reeves, Josh Tyler, and Michelle Morris.
Jen Holiday.
Jen Holiday. That is. Okay. I was wondering about that. Here to do a presentation. Just a little background, the city manager, myself, and Ms. Pedersen took a tour of the facility, over the MRF facility, and I learned a lot at that tour. I thought it was very interesting to see how recycling is processed. And then we attended the board meeting that evening, and I really liked the presentation. And so I asked them to come here tonight to give us a presentation, the city council, a presentation on their whole processing and things like that. So, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the invitation. Really appreciate it. My name is Sarah Reeves. I'm the Executive Director for CSWD. And again, thank you for making the trip down. We always love giving tours of our facilities, and we invite anyone to come down at some time who would like to be happy to take a look through the facility to see what we do. If you can.
Yes. Right? I got it?
Yes, you did. Thank you. So, one of the first things that we wanted to do was to get us all on the same page when we talk about what is recycling. So, here you see the state's definition. What it boils down to is something is considered recyclable if there's a customer out in the marketplace who is willing to purchase some of the material, and if we can collect it in the quantity and the quality that that customer wants. That is what makes something recyclable. Anything that is man-made has the potential for recyclability, but only if it has a market and there's someone willing to buy that. And then they buy that raw material after it's been sorted, and that's really what our facility does, is it sorts the blue bin materials into different components, and we sell those different sorted materials to the customers around the country and in Canada. And that is where the majority of our materials that are processed through the Murph and Williston go. So, we were affected just as everyone around the world was affected when China a few years ago said, "Nope, no more. We are not taking your garbage rolls." Thank you. The only materials that were going to China at that point were some of our paper products. So, we were fortunate here in the Northeast to have other markets for that material. So you see, this is again a very legalese definition, that is the states, if we have a customer, quantity and quality of material, we can consider it recyclable. Next please. So the Vermont recycling system is a market-driven system, just like most of them are in the Northeast and the eastern part of the United States. We happen to have two single-stream material recovery facilities, or MRFs, and that is basically when we say a single stream, that means that we can put our recycling into one bucket. We used to be able, or we used to have to, separate into maybe a clean bucket and a blue bin, or you'd have to go to a transfer station or a drop-off facility and separate everything into eight, five, six, seven, eight, nine containers. Single stream, all in one, is much more efficient for colors, it's much more efficient, I think, for us as recyclers to do that system. So we, our single-stream facility in Williston opened in 1993, and then we became single-stream in 2003. So we've had a MRF here in Vermont for quite some time. So, there are other ways and other folks up here in the Northeast Kingdom and in the northern part of the state recycle, so there are some source-separated facilities as well. Northeast Kingdom Solid Waste District, Northwest Solid Waste District also do separate out and they market some of their own materials. Folks do that differently on the eastern side of the Greens and the southern part. It's all a little bit different. And there's no one way that is required to get your materials to market. So, there's municipal choice involved. We just happen to be one of two. We process slightly more material on an annual basis than the MRF, but it's roughly equivalent. We both do about 45,000 tons of material each year in the two facilities. Next please. Thank you. So, when we're talking about glass, and that's why we're here tonight is to talk about glass, there are essentially two types of glass that can be sent out into the marketplace. So, when we're talking about source-separated glass, we're really talking about bottle-built glass. So that is, you know, the material where you bring it to redemption center, and they will then separate, or they have the potential to separate by color, but it's very, very clean. All that's going in there is glass. So, when you put everything into your blue bin or you go to a drop-off center, it is mixed with everything else. Again, that's the efficiency of that single-stream system. So, for separated glass, bottle-built glass, that has the greatest potential to be made into new bottles. It doesn't always, but that is the one stream of glass that has the highest possibility of being made to a new bottle. It can also be made into fiberglass, and that's the highest quality. Even higher quality if it gets to another glass separating facility, they separate into the clears. You see, they're clear, green, and brown. So the clear glass has the most potential to be made into something else because it can be turned into any other color. The next part, the blue bin of a single-stream recycling, the glass that goes into that bin, that glass does not become new bottles. It has never become new bottles. And I think the industry in general, not just Vermont, this has been a recycling industry issue, has never really been very clear, no pun intended, but has not been clear with the public about single-stream glass going bottle-to-bottle. It does have other uses, has a lot of other uses. And that's what we're also going to be here to talk about tonight, is a bunch of those different possible uses for the glass that does get recycled through our MRFs. And what we're talking about mainly tonight is the product that we make in our MRF, which is called processed glass aggregate. Next please. So, when we're talking about a processed glass aggregate, and essentially it's what we do is, Josh is going to go through the whole actual process, and these are some maps that I'll hand out to everybody, so you can take a look and see actually what it looks like. And those are mine too, because that's coming up soon. It essentially becomes like a sand-like product, and it can, has multiple uses. Some of them you see up here, insulation, different aggregates that can be used in concrete or engineering projects, civil engineering projects, filtration, abrasives, things like sandblasting. So there's a lot of different potential uses for this product that we happen to make in our MRF.
So tell them to take two maps and pass it on.
Yes, correct. So we're sort of dog here. That's your two. So Josh is going to talk about, so one of the reasons that we're here is the city sent us a letter asking about a notice of alleged violation that we received from the Agency of Natural Resources about a year ago in April. So Josh is going to go through some of the acceptable uses for the PGA, the processed glass aggregate, and we can talk more about your letter if you would like, go down the road. But I want Josh to kind of go through what we're really talking about is what the city needs.
All right. Awesome. I'm going to stand up and pour things out because I got to move when I talk. So I apologize to the camera person. But right here, we have the governing document for PGA. That's what the Vermont DEC, which is an arm of A&R, Agency of Natural Resources, generated. And as far back as 1994, most recently revised in 2002, they identified that there weren't any markets for glass. There wasn't a bottle-to-bottle market. There wasn't a viable financial or economic market. And they brought it up, you know, way back then, and all the city mayors were right. They said that the markets were dwindling for glass, and it didn't look like they were going to come back, which is why I highlighted this part, is that, you know, a trend is not expected to reverse in the foreseeable future. Well, they nailed it back then. So what they did was they opened it up. They used glass as opposed to trying to get to a bottle-to-bottle facility or to an insulation facility. They said, "If you can meet our criteria for PGA," that's that processed glass aggregate Sarah was talking about, "you can then use it for specific identified terms within this document." So that's kind of the first paragraph. One of the things I really like, you know, wanted to point out, which hopefully this comes up.
Yeah.
Okay. Was that, you know, was 1994 last revised in 2002? And this is really what the standard is and our requirement by A&R for us to really generate this PGA and what we can do with it. There's a lot of applicable uses. If you meet PGA, it will not be considered a solid waste, and it will not be regulated by a DEC or A&R if you meet that PGA requirement. I'll get into that in a little bit here. But the uses they apply for, or allow for, are, you know, for roadways, trails, parks, parking lots, sidewalk applications. One of the big things I highlighted here, because that was, you know, one of the things we used it for, was a local project for an embankment, which is a portion of filled section situated between the existing ground and subgrade on a roadside. So that was one of the projects we used this for. And the reason I bring it up is because there's been a lot of, it's just, I want to clear up, that's what we use this project for, I guess. It's important to point that out. So, a lot of these other things have been used in the past. I know A&R is looking to revise this moving forward, but this is what we use to kind of decide where our PGA is going to go. So getting to our facility, as Sarah discussed, the map that you guys have in front of you, you got the first section, you guys kind of have this part of it on the front of your, in front of you. And really, I'm only going to kind of cover the first couple steps because that's where we get into glass and how we process it. So as Sarah described, blue bin, single-stream recycling, that's when you put everything in one box or bucket or whatever. That gets brought to our facility in Williston. We cover most of the northern part of the state, just because of proximity. It comes into our tipping floor, and then we set it through a couple systems before we break the glass up, and I'll walk you guys through that quickly. This is what our tipping floor looks like. So everything that comes in a roll-off box or a compactor truck gets dumped out. You know, this is the whole shebang here. We push it up into a big pile. There's a conveyor belt over here, which gets to our pre-sort. That's our first stage of separation. That's where we pull out the lawnmower blades, garden hoses, tennis shoes, things that aren't supposed to be there to begin with that don't really mess our system up. Those things do get recycled pretty consistently. So from there, we go to our cardboard stream. We pull the cardboard off next because it's the next biggest thing, right? Once you get the big things out of the way, you can get smaller stuff. Immediately after cardboard, that's when we shatter our glass, because glass is abrasive. We don't want to send it through the system any farther than we have to. So this is what, I hope this guy decides. I didn't mean for that to be so loud, and didn't expect it to be that loud at all. So, I've got a couple of videos, everybody.
It gets amplified to the TV.
Yeah, yeah. Holy smokes. All right. What you could hear there was the glass shattering, right? So what we've got in our glass breaker is a bunch of, you know, shafts with steel discs on them, and they're rotating super fast, and it's just the rigidity of glass hits it, and it shatters. Plastics bounce, paper floats. So that's really where we get rid of all of our glass, and we immediately move it out of the system. So the next, let's see here, I hope everybody plugged your ears. Okay? This is another video. I don't think it's as loud, but my. So right there, that's what the glass looks like immediately out of the system. Single-stream glass, this is what we're getting out, and we're going to start cleaning it up from here. But you can see, it's not just glass. There's a lot of paper, there's bottle caps, there's a lot of steps to take before we can get it to that sand product that we can use as PGA for an allowable use by the state. So we immediately take it out of our processing facility, and we bring it to our primary cleanup. Our primary cleanup is the first step that we go through. This black chute right here, it goes into this little tipper, that's magnets, we pull all the ferrous material out that we can get. This next thing we go into is a trommel screen. We've got a gigantic vacuum system on it, and we have suction points in three spots that pulls as much paper, light stuff, stuff lighter than glass, paper, labels, anything we can get our hands on that'll come out. That comes through this little cyclone and pops down in here. Any garbage floats towards the end and comes off of here. So our primary cleanup pulls metal, light, paper, and then garbage. So what that looks like coming out of our building, and we send it out of the building, is this right here, and this hopefully isn't too loud. So that's after our primary cleanup. What we do then is we scoop it with our loader out of here and put it in this red hopper, which then leads up this conveyor belt into a vertical shaft impactor. This guy right here, which is kind of hard to see, might be easier to see on that screen. That's just a gigantic rock crusher. And we're running it as fast as we can because we want to pulverize this material to the finest amount we can get, because we want to get it to that sand fraction so we can use it. Underneath this is another conveyor that brings it up to our secondary cleanup, which is a screen. This is a flip flow screen. And the reason we purchased this is because it vibrates this way, and also is at an angle so the material kind of surfs its way down. But that also, that vibration makes pencils and straws bounce so they don't fall through the holes, which, you know, we don't want. The next video I'll show you is us when we were originally demoing this, when we first purchased it. And this is 2014. And so this isn't, you know, it's just hard to see where it is now because it's tucked up away. So this is kind of gives you a good idea. The top coming in is that glass that we just saw that came out of the building, and then I'll kind of walk you through it. This might be loud as well, so. Or not, I needed it. Okay, so here we go. That's what it looks like floating there. So you can see the material kind of floats across, and there's screen holes underneath. So all the fine stuff falls out first, and then the coarse stuff falls out second. That's the garbage that comes out. That's all the bottle caps and the paper and labels. And then underneath here, you've got all of your cleaned-up glass that comes out. And we've got, this is relatively how we do it. We've got a little bit different of a setup, but that's how we get our materials cleaned. We've got two different sizes. We've got fines and coarse. Our fines just fall straight through their sand, so a lot of the paper can't go through that, and like any of the plastic shards. So that fine comes through really clean through that screen. Then we move into a more coarse screen, you know, and that could use a secondary cleanup. So we actually bring it across another conveyor belt onto a shaker table, and then we send it across two more gigantic vacuum cleaners. We call them air blades. I won't subject you guys to that noise. But when we have it here, it comes out. This is our sand bunker. This is our coarse bunker, and this is our garbage. This is a secondary holding for our fines, just because we create so much. So in good conditions, we're about 90% to 95% fine. So that's that sand, that coarse sand. And we're about, you know, 10, 5% to 10% coarse. This is the stuff we can really use. This is more difficult to clean up, so we just wind up scooping this up and just running it back to the system. That's part of our process control. So again, this is what our medium-to-coarse sand looks like at this point. This is PGA. This is what we send off to a quarry to get blended into aggregate. I'll get into that. This is the pile at the quarry that they receive it. So again, we don't blend it at this point. We pay for the quarry to come get it, and they'll bring it to their site, and there's, you know, a specific use they have for it that's been approved, and that gets into the rules, right? So I told you I'd get back into this in a little bit. So this is all the stuff that we have to meet, we call it our material PGA. The highlighted stuff here, or the, I guess, the stuff that's bolded, that's V-Trans requirements. So we are meeting the A&R requirements, and we're also going a step above to meet V-Trans requirements, so that our material is able to make it into a V-Trans project if available. So that's kind of what this is just showing you, that we're jumping through a lot of stuff. So PGA, the V-Trans application, as we send it to the quarry, it gets blended into a specific type of aggregate subbase, and that's that 704.05A. It's just the standard subbase that V-Trans specs out. A lot of contractors use it, they call it 05A. But that's what we're currently sending this to become. One of the things we're researching currently is sand burrow. Sand burrow is used for a lot of drainage projects in construction. If you put like a drainage system in, you know, along your sidewalk or in your parking lot, a lot of times you'll put sand underneath as a drainage layer before you start putting your compaction basin, and that's sand burrow. So that's used in a lot of stuff. So we're really working with V-Trans right now to try and get us to be qualified as that as well. And that's a little bit trickier.
Is V-Trans, I was just about to tell you, is V-Trans using any of it now?
Not that I know of, but I'm not 100% sure, because we went and visited that big pile. I think if it's called for, they will. And we're working with the town of Burlington to see if they can get that 05A mix into a couple of projects in some of their construction.
I didn't mean to interrupt. I was speaking of the technical there. I just thought I'd ask.
I think when, I think we will meet the sand burrow spec, I think that'll go a lot quicker because you don't have to blend it, you know? It's just, you scoop it up and you can use it. So, sand burrow, just jumping into what we're doing as far as research goes on that. We've partnered with UVM, the Department of Engineering, their geotechnical class, and we had, this spring, we had them all, 90 kids, run these specific engineering analysis on it, and we've got, currently have the data. It's a whole lot. I'm working with this set of data and then also with representatives from V-Trans to really try and work together on how we can identify our PGA as a sand burrow. So that's kind of where we're going to kind of also open up more markets, because if we can make it an aggregate blend, or at least have it as an aggregate blend, and a sand burrow, that, you know, you have two options. Now, we're going to get into the costs. So, when we receive material at our facility, we have to pay, we have somebody who runs our facility for us. Every ton that comes in, we pay them, we pay them roughly $59.75 to process the material. So every ton of glass that comes through, we have to pay that so that it can get separated and go through our systems. We also have to pay for it to go out the door. You know, we pay $4.55 a ton for it to go to the quarry, and that's where it can be blended. If the quarry was to not want our material anymore, there's a facility up in Canada called 2M Resources, and they do secondary recycling of this material, and they range up to as much as $45 a ton. So, you know, our cost to recycle this material is between, you know, $64 and $104. This doesn't include our capital or administrative costs, and that means it doesn't include the money that we have to come up with to fix the equipment as it breaks or to replace the equipment, or our time to make sure everything's running properly. So kind of just spelling it out, you know, our tipping fee currently is $65 a ton. That was as of July 1 this year. And FY19, the cost of the process, to pay the processing fee and to get it out the door was $65.34, because we did send some up to 2M in Canada to see what that market was like and see what the reliability was with that facility. So that's why it's not, you know, it's a little more than $4.55 plus $59.75. So that's kind of the nuts and bolts on how our processed glass aggregate comes into our facility and goes out of our facility.
Couple of questions. When we were at the board meeting, you were talking about a rate increase. Can't remember what the dollar amount you were, the board was talking about.
It was $65.
But you said it cost you $60. But I thought you said you were going to have another one. Maybe I misunderstood. It's 65 now, but I thought you were talking about another increase this fall?
No, it's possible, but that has not been put through yet. So we want to make sure, it's all market-related. So if we don't have to raise the tipping fee, we won't. We are not, again, a private entity, so we don't have to make profit, we just have to cover our costs as much as we can. We do still subsidize this facility as a district. So we're waiting to see kind of how things, how the market is over the next month and a half or so. But we do need to let people know within 45 days. That's by contract, we have to let folks know, at least let our processor know. We want to give people as much runway and time as possible, but if we don't have to raise it, we don't want to raise. So it's all.
Another thing to point out is that our $65 is the lowest in the region. You know, if you look at Albany and Rutherford, they're between $90 and $95 and $100. So, you know, we're trying to provide the most value to everybody that comes to us at the same time. Have to cover our costs with capital and processing.
Yeah, I understand. You have to cover the cost and just hope that the rate increase is even for everyone. Because that was part of the, you know, as you know, when we were there, that was part of the issue.
Right. It's one fee for anyone who comes in the door.
Anyone. So V-Trans is not currently using the aggregate unless Wickham mixes it there?
The steps are, we pretty much pay for Wickham to pick it up. Wickham knows how to blend it in that specific type of material. If V-Trans chooses to use it, that's between V-Trans and Wickham. I don't know if it's been used yet, but again.
But it means spec?
It means spec.
It's available for local roads projects as well, so V-Trans has their own system.
And just, you know, if we were to go to a V-Trans project, this is a drop in the bucket, because we would run out of this material and probably attend to the project that V-Trans would use. So it would just go away really quickly, but just as far as scale goes on what they need for rock.
True. True, I have to see what you have piled up. All right. I think that's, other questions from the council members have anything that they'd like to ask? I've got completely different questions. Plastics.
Ah, okay.
Seeing that news story of the sending it, was it a whole shipload full of containers from, was it Malaysia? That's coming back to Canada and the US. Does that mean that that market is really drying up and you're going to have an issue? I don't want to root for glass, but I just saw that video the other day, that news story, and I was just curious. Is the plastic market drying up now?
It's a great question, we have to talk about it, because yes, it is, it's very topical. So, it's an interesting question, because again, China said no to everything, right? So where we were affected was with our papers. So when they said no to everything, that meant folks who were relying on them for all of the markets had to sell these programs. We had never sent our plastics to China, so we didn't have that issue. We, our plastics are still staying domestic, still staying within the US, actually. And we do have good reliable outlets for that. So here in Vermont, we should not be affected. We send ours to KW Plastics, so they keep wanting all of our material, and we, they actually can't get enough recycled content. And that's the case with a lot of people who want that, this is a soda bottle or the water bottle plastic, can't get enough of that. So where we're trying to work with our vendor who markets our material, they are always looking for different outlets. You don't want to ever have all of it in one basket if you can avoid that. So they're working hard to find other people to work with. Some good news on, to paper products, there's a lot of capacity coming online with either new mills or with old mills that have been shuttered and are coming back online. So by the end of this year, a mill in Maine will be coming back on to take mixed paper, which was our problematic material, and other mills in Ohio, Pennsylvania, New York, all within the next two or so years are coming online. So this is certainly the worst it has been in a very long time. We've been in this industry 15, 16 years now. This is the worst. But there is some small light at the end of that tunnel. So as far as our material going to secondary markets, which is what Malaysia is, plastics, we're still okay.
Okay. I just have to see that. I was concerned, but I saw, I don't know how many containers it was coming back on that. that.
Thank you, and, you know, because it takes so long to get there, you know, that could have been material that went four or five months ago and is now coming, turning around and coming back. So there could have been a problem in a mere four, five, six months ago and you'd never know. We don't have that situation here, luckily, unfortunately.
Okay. Any questions from council members?
I just, I'm sorry, I want you to just take a revisit to the letter that we sent to make sure their presentation covered what our initial.
Concerns. Well, I know they can't answer anything about the investigation because that's still an active investigation.
Well, there's, it's actually not an investigation, so.
Well, I mean, well, I call it an investigation, but it's, well, I guess when things go to the Attorney General, I always think of either investigating, maybe it's.
Yes, but they're not, it's just it was another avenue for the agency of natural resources to be able to talk through different avenues of solutions. So the AG's office is not investigating anything.
Sure.
There's no, there's no investigation.
But their office is doing something with that?
Well, they're working with the agency, but some administrative solutions could be, but there's nothing criminal that's being investigated. So I just want to pull that back from, I don't know if people think of it, the board investigation.
We're just going to do the letter here. True, it is, it was a notice of alleged violations, I don't think there's anything.
One of the things that the letter points out was the confidence in the recycling that we wanted for our community.
Right.
And that was one of the reasons why I had asked you to pull forth this map and show the pictures of your facility because when I went there, I found it very eye-opening and that's what I wanted to present to our municipality. We're going to keep recycling, we're not changing anything that we're doing.
Please do.
And we have a requirement with our solid waste implementation plan and if I had one more thing that I could have said at the food scrap meeting, it would have been how much I hate doing our annual report. And it takes me a good 12 hours to sit down and do it, not to mention all the pestering I do to the people who provide us data. So I'm really relieved to hear that there might be some light at the end of the tunnel for that report, but regardless, that's all about our diversion rates. And this, this is what you have on your wall and I, I do encourage people, if I may drain on your resources, to go visit your facility.
Please, yes.
I found it helpful and then you saw that we have the food scraps meeting tonight, which was, it started out to be purely coincidence, but then when I realized it was all going to be in the same night, I thought, let's use it to everybody's advantage to really build upon what's happening with recycling, not only for food scraps, but for our single stream. So in one of, one of the paragraphs that I read, I think it was the second paragraph that talked about us wanting to have faith and confidence in our recycling program. And I don't know if you can read that and, and I think it was the second paragraph, if I'm not mistaken. I just wanted to tie it all together.
Oh, okay. Wait, the second paragraph of the letter was, as you know, Act 148 requires haulers who provide curbside rubbish pickup also provide curbside recycling services. There's our understanding that the recycling collected by haulers in that area is delivered to your facility for further processing. The city of Newport residents and businesses have been faithfully recycling, believing they are making a positive contribution to our environment by lessening the amount of waste and increasing the amount of recyclables. The city has also encouraged recycling and waste diversion through educational and outreach requirements of our SWIP. And so I think they came, they were here basically over the whole glass issue. We saw the news story, I saw the pictures, you know, of the glass. There were questions as whether it was used in a valid project, whether it met PGA specs and that was some of the main questions. The council was concerned that we were sending recyclables to your facility and it wasn't being processed or treated in the correct manner. I know from what I saw, it appears now, appears that it is. I mean, we toured out, we also went to the Wickham facility to see how they've got a big sample of them, so. So that, from that aspect, I think the glass, from what I can tell, I think the key will be to make sure it can meet V-Trans and other projects will be the key and, in my mind, just to make sure that it doesn't get dumped or, you know, just dumped or put in places, things like that.
Well, one of the things that I learned in the presentation was the public perception that if you have a glass, you're going to turn it into a glass or a recycled park bench or something like that, and that's not always the case.
Right, exactly right.
So the, what, what we believe as innocent recyclers, if you will, that you're going to have this really cool contribution to society, the markets drive it, really, is what it comes down to.
Yes, absolutely, and as I mentioned at the beginning, and I think in general, the recycling industry as a whole has done a disservice when, especially on this material, but on others too, in not being open about all of the different possible products that could be made from the recyclables. Plastics have hundreds of different potential products that can be made from a water bottle and more of that information has gone out, but not so much about things like, even mixed paper. You know, when you start to recycle your junk mail, it only has a few more steps and then it can't be recycled anymore. It can be made into paper towels, it can be made into toilet paper, that's it. So, you know, there's, there's a very finite use for a lot of this material, so it really does, it did us all of us a disservice. So I appreciate the opportunity to come up and talk about these things and so you do have some confidence that we definitely want you to continue to recycle because again, the diversion requirements, you have them, we have them, the entire state has these goals we have to make and it is important to keep on going through even these difficult challenging market times, we will get to the other side and we'll be better and stronger for it. Thank you.
One of the other things, and I agree with you on all of that, but one of the other things is that the legislature has put in a complete lack of flexibility for when the markets tank. And I, that affects me when it comes to filling out that god awful SWIP report, but it affects you as evidenced by the situation that you're dealing with. And I would like to see from, from my perspective, this has been a great learning experience for me. We're also writing our municipal plan, so I'm going to be able to put that, put a little more detail into that section when it comes to our solid waste plan, but I really think we have an opportunity to advocate, to change legislation so it opens up some flexibility so we're not dealing with stuff like this. And that's one of the things that I'm ultimately hoping comes out of this collaborative experience that might have stemmed from suspicion and conspiracy, but as we went through our process, you know, ultimately, ultimately the laws that are coming out of the state of Vermont when it comes to dealing with these markets are untenable. And I just, I don't know what that's going to mean because consumption and consumerism hasn't changed. And we traveled over the spring and the summer to different places in the country and I was struck by how many landfills and how many garbage trucks that I saw throughout my travels. So it's not, as long as consumerism is what it is and you've got Amazon and you've got your packaging and you have these other things that are emerging that we don't even know about yet, these laws are, if they're untenable, then we have no choice, then we have to find alternative solutions that may not be in alignment with, with the best environmental practices and that sucks.
I agree on all points and, you know, as you mentioned, things have changed, packaging has changed. You know, anyone who either has little kids or grandbabies nowadays, baby food doesn't come in little jars most, I mean, it does, but they're in pouches now. You know, when you see, it was like soups that come in pouches. We can't recycle that, there's not a market for that and yet all of this material is being created. Well, let's look at the life cycle, let's look at the environmental impact of those packaging because maybe that actually is the better solution from an environmental standpoint than a glass jar. But we need to start looking at things from a very different perspective, particularly with the one landfill here in the state and with all of these, you said, these state mandates, the legislative pressures, let's really start looking at things from a different perspective and see if we can then take it further into the 21st century. We're just really stuck in an old way of looking at things and we, something needs to change, completely.
And I quickly learned how it's all market based because at one point I could recycle my wood pellet bags, number four on it, they would take it. And all of a sudden I went to the recycler and Red says, oh, we don't take those anymore and I had, I had like 75 of them and I had to bring them all home. You know, it's like the market and it's so fluctuating and it was disappointing to me because I do get rid of them one way. That's how I put my trash out every other week. I recycle it that way because I put my trash in it to go, but it's the only way I can get rid of it. Like, I learned that even though black plastic has a recycle number, they can't take it. It's these little things that you don't realize because you think because it has a recycle number on it, they can take it. So that's, actually, that's very misleading, I think, to the public.
Exactly.
When you see a recycle number on something and then no one can take it.
And that, that gets again back to the recycling education industry as a whole for 30 years, right? To get folks into the habit and we have, we now have a generation and a half or two generations who recycling is normal. This is what we do and that's great, but we shortcut it, right? So we said, look for the chasing arrows, look for the triangle, look for the number and that's what it means and that was never what it meant. You know what the triangle meant? The triangle was simply a frame for the number inside and the number inside was so the manufacturers could know what type of plastic that was. You don't see a chasing arrow with a number on anything else because it's only for plastic. So a number one is PET, a number two is HDPE, that's just so that if it was a different shape, the manufacturers could look at it quickly and say, ah, okay, I can take it, it's PET, I can take it, it's HDPE. Doesn't mean it's. Right, well, exactly, exactly. And so they took advantage of kind of a quick, easy identifiable and turned it into something that wasn't. That's why we need to look at things differently and you're exactly right because the markets change so quickly and we can't change at a dime as recycling consumers may, we just, we can't do that. We learn something, we want to keep doing it because we want to do the right thing. So state, we need to help do the right thing, make it easier for people to comply and to recycle the way they want to, so.
To afford to be able to.
To afford.
Sure, and that's, that is another, another big, big component to that. Absolutely.
We have quite a budget to support our recycling center and our household hazardous waste events and we don't see it going down anytime soon.
Something has to shift, exactly right.
So, I certainly learned a lot of that trip also, I appreciate it because I was never really sure where my stuff went. I did what I was supposed to do, but after I, I was like, I don't know where this is throwing. And all the big issues that we covered and the importance of stuff, there's one tiny little thing that I think is important, it's the fact that there's actually some people in that mill, in the facility actually handling this stuff.
Oh, yes.
And the importance of not throwing sharp objects and anything that's not supposed to be there because there's, there's tons of equipment, but there's actually some people in there doing this.
Thank you, thank you so much for bringing that up. You are exactly right and that is one of the issues with our materials recovery facility. It is mostly manual labor. We, we do what's called positively soaring, so we, as materials fly by in the belt, we, they're trained to pick up certain things, everything else goes through. And in modern facilities, machines do a lot of that. There's so folks on the front end to get the bowling balls and the engine blocks and the hoses and things and then on the, at the other end, the very, very end, the quality control to get the machines didn't pick up, but in the middle are machines and that really does help with worker safety. So anything that is not on the information that comes from the city to say this is what should go in your bin, don't put it in. If you are in doubt, throw it out. I mean, do not, you know, think, well, my, the pen is kind of, sort of, it's plastic, it might work. If you're not sure if it's not pictured on the information, please keep it out of the bin, that will help keep off the workers.
I was quite surprised at the number of scissors.
Yes, scissors, needles, knives. We get animals, we get a lot of deer, carcasses every now and then, we'll get.
Scraps.
We had a bear spray shut us down for a day and a half.
Oh, my gosh.
Because it's discharged on one of our lines and.
Mini propane, batteries, a lot of batteries.
Yeah, batteries are.
Mini propane tanks, the camp tanks, a lot of those because they're metal, right? Doesn't go in your bin, so.
So what do you do with the propane? They go to the trash?
We pull them out.
No, but what do we, our recycling, we have to let people know that it has to go in the, in the trash?
No, no, they are recyclable scrap metal for sure, but they go.
Scrap metal, okay, they go in the scrap metal pile.
Well, depends on how.
It's different. No, because a lot of people ask me all the time, what are we doing with that coal and propane?
It's different.
It's explainable.
Yes, so they have, they have, you know, properly, so whatever Newport tells you to do as Newport resident, that's what you do, so you learn.
So what do we do?
Pick and shovel.
Pick and shovel.
You have derby tapes.
Okay, so it sounds like fluorescent lights, if you sell it, you have to take it back.
If you sell it, it's kind of like that. And then you have to pick and shovel.
Okay, well, that's good to know. Pat Austin had a question and then I'm going to have limited questions because it was really a presentation for the city council so that we could get analysis, but I will have limited questions.
So one of the biggest concerns for the council had in area residents was, you know, when they received the violation for stock by other company at last year landfill, they immediately decided they were going to increase the rate that they were charging anybody that come from outside of their district, they were going to juggle it for what they were charging in their district. So I would really like, you know, to know that they'll never pass on that, that type of policy again to charge any district different from, from their district. Is that something you guys are willing to commit to?
So they're not related, they weren't at all related. It was, I just said that, that's, we got the NOD and there's plans, and he's doing a market, a tank, so, so I just want to make sure that it's, that it was not a related thing. So we had had, going back years, back to 2006, I think it was, there had been a differential, it was a small differential, so there may have been $21 for a district and $25 for a district, it was pretty close. We don't have that differential now, but when you're talking about and the one that the council hadn't given to us about was that three-month period where we did raise the out-of-district fee to $50 when we kept in-district fee at $25. Three months later, July 1, the fee came up to the same. So I think from my perspective, and I've been in this position for three years, differential doesn't make any sense, so I would not necessarily be recommending that to my board going forward. But keeping in mind too, that the, the members of the Genesee Solid Waste District, over the years have guaranteed the risk, they have been the ones who have paid for the facility and, you know, we were being responsible to our member town, one of our member towns, but again, it was a short lift and it went right up and they knew about it, even though they hadn't budgeted for it either, they knew that it was coming up to the same on July 1 and has been the same fee for everybody since.
So for me, as a hauler in the Northeast Kingdom, just to explain to you guys, you know, I've had a lot of people say to me, I knew it was getting, it wasn't being recycled, I knew that this material wasn't, and that's disheartening for me because we're trying to show value that this material is being reused in a valuable way. What I heard from this presentation was that, a couple of things, one that you don't necessarily have to come to our facility, even though it's the only one that's within our region that we can cost effectively get to, that when the glass is in the material. The other thing was that they had approval to use this, this material and just, I don't believe that for one second and I'll tell you why. As soon as they got the violation, they stopped bringing the glass there and changed their reports. There's no way that anybody in the state would approve a project with this scope. It's definitely not bank stabilization, it's flowing down over the bank, you can see it on Google Earth. And I'll tell you a quick story, we had a, we had a problem in our district just this last week, the Northeast Kingdom Waste Management District, I sit on the Board of Supervisors for Charleston and Holland and we couldn't move our glass to 2M, the facility that goes to, and the glass from our district is source separate, not by color, but by, by material. There was three roll-off containers sitting at the facility, when we built completely full of glass and the place that we hauled it to, to reload it in trucks in Hurley was completely full. So we requested for permission to use 30 yards of this glass for road base at the landfill in lieu of material that would be hauled into that facility for road base. And the district manager explained to me that we would, that would buy us two weeks in 49 towns in the Northeast Kingdom if we could have just moved this. And so the agency denied it and they said that, and there, I actually spoke with Julian Moore, the Secretary of the Agency, and they, she explained to me that they are in oversight. and they, she explained to me that they are an oversight agency and their goal is to make sure that the material is diverted from the landfill and recaptured for best use. And the cost of doing that doesn't weigh into their decision. So we had to, we had to have extra containers delivered and charge rent. So that inflates the cost for these facilities to run in our area. And, and then when, when this situation comes to a head, God forbid there be a big monetary fine, I'm concerned. That's why I asked what was going to happen with our rate differential with other areas, is that finding it passed on to other areas? When these areas thought they were reusing, this material was being reused.
So did they say you couldn't take it over to, to M in Canada?
No, to M in Canada, it just takes glass. I, when, when I, I found a market in about two thousand and fifteen in Canada that would accept the material, they were going to buy it from, from us, but it could not have glass in it. Which is when I explained to you that I started trying to testify to get glass removed and come up against a lot of resistance with Chittenden. It was disheartening to find out this is what they were doing with the glass. In two thousand and sixteen, I can't remember if it was BPR or Seven Days, that has had an article about this material, and the previous district manager, Tom Moreau, is quoted in there as saying that the, the glass is too dirty, it does not meet PGA spec. Now they made the investment and it does, but it's, I was really hoping to get some answers on maybe some other projects that this would have been used in. But it sounds like most of this material went to that landfill for well over a decade. And that, that's hard for me to explain to my customers, you know, how to, how to show that.
So just to jump in real quick, if you don't mind, it wasn't a decade. And just to clear up any inaccurate statements, it wasn't a vacant project, it was PGA spec material that has been denied by ANR was just glass, it didn't go through a primary and secondary cleanup system where, where ours has.
It, it met PGA spec before you made the investment just recently to clean up the glass?
We have documentation that we've been meeting PGA spec since two thousand and three, which is when we went to single stream.
That would have been great if you would have brought it.
I think we presented it, didn't we?
Have we here?
Or, I guess we haven't yet, have we?
So if it, if it met PGA spec, why was it not being used in sub-road base, some other project other than a, if, what is wrong at that landfill that you're stabilizing a bank for, with, I mean, you can see it in Google Earth, it's flowing over the bank, the trees are growing into the glass. But I'm just, what engineer would approve that use of that much material? And if it was met spec, why was it not used in a valuable way?
That is a valid one. You know, it's, so, we can go on and on about, on this part, I always want to, but...
It's under the investigation, I call it investigation, ANR is looking into it. ANR is looking into it, they got a notice of violation.
Alleged.
Well, yeah, yeah, notice of alleged violation, I meant, yeah, I'm sorry. I meant to say that, NOA, I was going to use the acronym, but I said, no, I'm going to say, I missed a part of it. Right, notice of alleged violation, NOA. And so it is being looked at by those.
Oh, yes.
And so, but there's no resolution yet as far as...
We're waiting.
We're waiting, okay. Then I saw one other hand. Yes?
I was just curious if there, I haven't really studied this, so it's a simple question. Wouldn't it be a cheaper per ton cost if you had just pure glass and you didn't have to have all of these systems that you have in place to take out all the other crud? And in many places, for many years, we separated our glass out and we, it was very simple to just give that to whoever was dealing with it. Why is this not being done and wouldn't it be cheaper per ton? And if we send you pure glass, will you charge us less per ton?
Actually, that's a great question because I think I asked you, I asked you that question, but I was actually there. Why don't we go back to the old-fashioned way of separating everything? Can't remember with the visiting, the state wanted single stream?
No, they, they don't, they don't care how you achieve the goals. So you can't, if, if Newport wants to do that, you certainly can. Basically, it's a hall efficiency, which is why single stream was put into place all over the United States. But there are still some communities that do just that. They do separate into different commodities and it does create a cleaner stream. You see that in Europe, all over the place, on the side of, of the rivers, they've got their ground and they've used it there, and that's what they do. So, yes, and that's why the bottle-built stream is a much more desirable stream of class because it is separated and it doesn't have all the paper and food and plastic packed into it. So you certainly can. Glass is heavy to transport, as Pat will tell you, you know, it's very expensive to move that glass. So it may take a long time to build up enough of a load to move and then it's very heavy. But, yes, it's, it's, glass is one of the hardest to manage materials, period, in the stream right now. So we would love to talk about other solutions for glass.
So to speak to that point, Senator Rogers worked with some, some policies in the area district to try to get glass moved into the bottle bill. The bill was S two eighty-five. I put a lot of work into it, testified it multiple times, and Jen Holliday, Chittensawaist District came and testified that she didn't support rebuilding glass unless they opened up the complete bottle bill. I totally agree with the bottle bill's a place for glass, it's source separated by color. Just confused why you would not have supported that at the time. And I would love to be able to work a little closer with, with, have Newport and Northeast Kingdom work a little closer to the district, but it has to be a vision that is not a one-size fits all.
Totally agree. I think we're totally open to working on that, you know, the, the bill you referred to is huge with a lot of different moving parts to it.
It's thirteen positions, you're above everyone.
Yep, so we could sit down and absolutely talk about what works for different communities. Certainly, if anybody's been at the State House in, in, in the actual room, is not where you work those things out, one-on-one, but we're open for that. I just wanted to also let people know if they were interested in touring our Murph, we have, the Chittenden-Sawaist District's website has, we do several public tours every week through the good months of the year. And so you're welcome to sign up, you don't have to be a member, you can come, come on down sometime and sign up for a tour. And we love to show people the facility because it really helps people recycle the, the proper way and, and makes them understand what's behind the scene and how it, you know, there's actual people handling this material and how difficult it can be. So we, we love to give tours.
All right, anything else? Go ahead.
You talked about paper and that it's almost at the end of its lifespan. What about cardboard?
Cardboard is, it has a few more iterations beyond the just junk mail paper. And that market mysteriously too has dipped. So things are absolutely shifting globally as, again, China stands firm in saying they're not going to take a lot of material. There's pressure internal in China because the mills are also hurting. So we're going to see some more shifting over the next two to three years about this. So cardboard still does have a market, I think it's a little bit low, but it will come back up. It's also pretty cyclical, so as manufacturers need boxes to ship things over so we can backpack them, they're going to need more cardboard, they're going to need more, more of that stock. So it's still a solid recyclable, so still definitely put it in. Markets are not as good as they were, but they'll come back.
Okay, very good. Well, I really do appreciate you coming up.
Thank you for the invitation.
My closing note will be is I hope we can all work together. Because I was a little discouraged when I saw the bill that was, I read all the bills, I'm one of my, I'm one of those weird people. And when I saw that you folks had opposed it, kind of like bothered me in such a way that it's like, we already are then the dog in this area of the state because we know that the, the power in Montpelier really is Chittenden County. They got six senators compared to our measly little two and most people, they got way more reps. I know they're the bigger population center, but we, we just ask for equal representation sometimes in Montpelier. And I was discouraged when I saw you folks had opposed that bill in John Rogers Committee that really kind of, I hate to say soured me a little bit, but I, I do always have hope that we can work things out. I really do appreciate you coming up and giving us a tour again. That was really good to learn and see what happens with everything. But let's, let's, really, we'd just like to close on and thank you again and have a safe trip back.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your hospitality. Thank you very much.
Good to see you again.
Thank you, good to see you.
Thank you again. Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Before we move on, I need to get a drink of water. The next item on the agenda is the Public Works Vehicles bids. We received one, two, three bids, the Library Auto Sales, North Point, and Hayes Ford. And I came in and I opened up all the bids, and then what I do is I give them right to the Public Works Director to make sure we have apples to apples, oranges to orange, oranges. And Mr. Burnier recommends, the prices were very, quite variable, but he ultimately recommended a two thousand and nineteen Ford F-150 four-wheel-drive supercab XLT, eighty-four month, hundred-thousand-mile warranty for thirty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
It's on the next page.
It's on the back page.
We're not used to the efficiency of double-sided paper.
We're double-siding the same paper.
Can we have Chunken got everything on the page?
But that's what he's recommending. There were two different vehicle specs and that's the one. I won't go through all the different prices, but we have it all here.
We've got the same partnership, one's an XL, one's an XLT.
On page two, it gives you the difference.
It gives you the difference. Questions from council members on it? And we would need a motion...
What's my key? What kind of feature is that?
My key is if you, I believe you don't have to put the key in it, you should, kind of like, mine's a smart key, but I think that's what that is. Is that right, Pedro? Is that what that is, my key is, you don't have to put the key in, you just push a button? Any other questions on this? Then I would entertain a motion to accept the Public Works Director's recommendation. Motion's made, is there a second?
I second it.
Made and seconded, discussion on the motion?
These, these differences on the back, which truck are these on?
Tom's recommending the XLT version for the price.
No, but what, I don't, this is what's on the XLT, is the XL that you have?
Yes. Yeah, the list is what's on the XLT.
Yes. So motion's made, seconded. Any other discussion? None others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. Would you like a copy?
Yes, sir.
I think that should be a better.
I want, right?
I circled it on the back just for me, but it's...
Yeah.
Okay, motion carries.
Miss May, does it say the used truck is a plow truck or?
No, it's a Public Works Vehicle. It's for the Department of Public Works, it's not a fire truck.
No, 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 no. No, plow truck.
Oh, plow truck? No, no. I thought you said fire truck. You have to add like half a million for that.
I tried. But it's, but is it a, it's a like a pickup truck or a dump, dump body?
It's a...
It's an F-150, so it's just a pickup. So I'm sorry if it's something in there.
What does it represent?
Represents the two thousand and six pickup that the mechanic is driving that won't get inspected. So what they do is they, they replace the vehicles and move them down the line. So the mechanic will get the next oldest vehicle, they use it, and then all the vehicles that are currently on, on inventory move down the line. So the, the director always gets the newest one. I don't remember what year, year his current one is, do you remember? It's had that since at least, I came in two thousand and fifteen, so it's got to be a couple of years older than that.
We move everything down the line.
Yeah.
And then, but yeah, that, the oldest one will not get inspected.
So this is a general purpose?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do you put a plow, I mean, might be even put a plow on that if you had to, what could you?
No, I wish, I don't know enough about that. I know what I have for a truck, I can't put a plow.
Right.
And we wouldn't plow the streets with, with it.
No. All right, we'll move on. The next fund, next fund, the next thing is the, well, it has the word fund in it, I gotta look through the right lenses.
Distract the day, it's fun. It's really fun.
The next one is the NIOS fund criteria. We received, this came up at discussion at the last council meeting, and the city manager, city clerk reviewed all the criteria, like Mr. Johnson, you reviewed the decree from probate and all that. I'll let you kind of go through.
This, the following guidelines are basically the same ones that were passed in ninety-three, except the old one had, still had the five hundred dollars in it. So I basically copied them down. Couple of word changes, but included the four hundred dollars in twice in five-year periods you can get it. So I'd like to have this approved so I can get it on record if that's what it is. I mean, we've been doing that, but anyway, but now it's in a, in a policy. Originally, the NIOS fund was in a will from back, probably NIOS back in nineteen forty-seven, I think. And the original will said that they would take this, what's left of his estate and build a home for aged people in the city. Well, they got thinking about it and realized that the money would only last probably seven or eight years. They discarded that, it couldn't be done. And they agreed to, when his wife died in the early fifties, that money would be put into a fund and invested and reinvested for, for the people who need it. You gotta be sixty years old, back then you had to be a Protestant faith, but that was because the Catholic faith had a home for the aged in the city at the time. But the council a few years back changed that to, there's no religious criteria anymore. And you can't be, you have more, you have, the limit is two hundred percent above the current public. If you're over that, you don't qualify. Basically, for people who need it, the financial problem, they have problems.
I've helped, I've helped some people use it to get eyeglasses. I helped one person get it so they could get new dentures. You know, it's things like that. A lot of people use it to help pay the state leader, have a hard time being in Waterville one quarter, they'll use it for that. But it was recommended by the auditor or the probate to reduce it to four hundred because it wasn't getting, it wasn't getting the income, you know, because you can only spend...
Yeah, we just wanted to do that because for five hundred dollars, you could apply annual support.
Right.
So people can get five hundred dollars a year. At that rate, we weren't going to have any money left. And you only spend the interest.
Right.
You can't touch the principal. And we changed it so the money would go further. We'd been out of money by now if we hadn't changed it.
And what, what the recommendation is, is to have the city clerk treasurer's office go ahead and approve it because it has to meet the strict criteria anyway, so it wouldn't have to come to the council.
I don't mind doing that. I mean, because it's a set criteria, if you don't, if you don't meet the criteria, you can't, you can't get it. It's just, it's a very simple thing, you either qualify or...
Has the council ever rejected that?
I've never known to refuse one because everybody applies and meets the criteria.
Why, why must the applicant not be covered by Medicaid?
It was the original one, we didn't take that out. I don't know the answer to that.
And probate's the one that oversees it. Probate oversees this whole...
And I would think it's because Medicaid covers many of those things. So, is this a, talking Medicaid or Medicare?
Medicaid.
Medicaid, so Medicaid, there is, yeah, there's Medicaid money for dental, there's Medicaid money for things like that.
Nobody pays for dentures?
I didn't say dentures, I just said dental. So, I would think that's why that was in there. I assume it was here.
I don't know the answer, but I assume it's in there because basically we're out, we're lack of being able to explain it, explain it expertly, that Medicaid would pay for it. If they had Medicaid, they don't have to...
Not your water bill? So, are we approving these rules?
Well, I think the original intent of that before it got changed was medical. Okay, because there's a lot of Medicare and Medicaid stuff in there. But long years back, it got changed where, because they interpreted the care, maintenance, comfort, and welfare people in a pretty broad, with a pretty broad statement covering. Now, you need comfort and care, because you gotta pay your fuel bill, you gotta pay your water bill, it's pretty uncomfortable in the winter time if you don't have any fuel.
Yeah.
But the reason why this came to the council and recommending that it handle in the clerk's office, so that we don't have to have an executive session every time.
Right.
Because there's a lot of confidential information on the application. I mean, it was kind of an unwritten rule that we did it at the table, but since it was a document at the table, it tended to become public. And so, all those people's information could potentially have gotten out there, and I know if I'm applying for something like that, I wouldn't want my name all over. You know, it was kind of like an unwritten thing to the press, they never bothered the council, but there's always that opportunity where someone could say, well, you've had a document on the table, you wanna see it. And so, I think this is the best way of handling that. And it's like anything else. A good analogy is, nobody knows unless you tell people, if you're actually getting a pre-bate under probate taxes. Only his office, the state of Vermont, or an attorney doing a title work, they're the only ones that know if you get a pre-bate unless you tell people. So, that, they keep that confidential, because if someone goes in and asks for a tax bill, like say I wanna get a copy of the tax bill from somebody, the one he prints up doesn't have any of the pre-bate information. And so, thus how come I, I think this is the best way to go with this whole, this whole aspect, to keep it confidential.
If these are adjustable, then I would suggest combining three and four. For medical expenses, the applicant must have exhausted all benefits available to the individual through private insurance, Medicare, or Medicaid. And then just strike number four. It's all health insurance, why exclude one over another?
Well, right here, if you're on Medicaid, you're prohibited from getting funds.
Right.
If what you, you say that they've exhausted all benefits and they're on Medicaid, then you're eligible.
I'm reading this as, if you're applying for a medical expense, then you must exhaust all your options through private insurance and/or Medicaid. And then it goes on to say the applicant must not be covered, oh, sorry, Medicare before, the applicant must not be covered by Medicaid, excludes anybody who has Medicaid. And that's silly. So, if we just combine it...
I have my Medicare, but I don't have my Medicaid, because I don't have to sign up for the second part yet, because they have...
That's Medicare Part B, that's way different than Medicaid.
I think they did that so that if they had Medicaid, if it was a medical bill, it would probably have been covered. And you're right, the first one covers that, just by saying all benefits available.
Yeah. So, if we put Medicaid in with that, then it would be fair. So, does that require a motion to modify the wording? So, I'd be happy to make the motion.
I think you gotta make two motions, two separate ones. One is to make whatever amendment you wanna make on this one, and the other one is to whatever recommendation you're gonna do for making the decisions that you're gonna form or whether you're gonna empower...
I have a question.
You can make a motion on this page, change it, still sign this section, page on this, change it, but you gotta, so you can still approve it with the change.
My question is, so we have the leeway of setting this criteria, it's not governed by probate, they only just oversee the estate? Is that how that works again?
Oh, probate, the subject bank handles the investments, they actually do the filing, it's in to me, I go through it, sign it, and take it over there, and probate approve.
Okay, but they don't require...
They just take it to see, and make sure everything's balanced and nothing going.
They don't, they don't govern, so probate doesn't govern the criteria then, that's what, okay, that's why I wanted to make sure too, that we weren't overstepping in something that only the probate court can, you know, can do.
No, they don't, they don't, they don't regulate.
Okay, no, I just wanted to make sure, Kevin.
How would this proposed change affect the Niles Fund? I mean, would it be a lot more opportunities to give money, having to reduce the overall amount that's given?
Well, I assume that everybody on Medicare would now be able to apply for it.
You mean Medicaid?
I mean Medicaid.
Which is a pretty small percentage of our population, but it is the poorest of the poor. So, to exclude the lowest-income people is kind of the opposite of what we're trying to do here.
I understand, but I think, I think Dan and Roy, that they assumed if you're on Medicaid, the bill would be paid, you wouldn't have to apply for this, because they get it paid.
At least eighty percent. I don't know if it'd be a hundred percent. I think this was covered with the fact that they don't necessarily have to come in for payments towards medical bills.
Right.
But the way this is written, if they're on Medicaid, they shouldn't get any assistance. And that's what we've gotta eliminate, is that's kind of stating, if they're on Medicaid, they can't get assistance.
Right.
Yeah, I understand the fuel and the water, I agree with there, but I think if this was written, it was primarily for medical, that's what they were keeping, they weren't talking about fuel, eyeglasses, and water, strictly medical.
I have a problem with it.
So, if I try to make this motion, I move that we amend the guidelines and change the wording of number three, same beginning, and just add Medicaid on the end. So, the second half of the sentence would read, they've exhausted all benefits available to the individual through private insurance, Medicare, or Medicaid, and/or, I think Medicaid. And/or. And you want that to be a single motion, so then I'm also recommending that we drop number three out of our options?
Well, I think they need to be separated.
Okay, so then...
Okay, so we have a motion to reword number three, to be for medical expenses, the applicant must have exhausted all benefits available to the individual through private insurance, Medicare, or Medicaid.
And/or.
And/or. So, that is the motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
It also includes removing number four?
Yes.
Okay. So, a motion's been made and seconded, discussion. And all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
So, I'll pass it down, everybody signs.
Now, we're gonna have another motion to approve, now we have to have another motion to approve this. It would be, you wanna read that?
Sure.
Because I don't make the motions. It'd be just...
Right, I know, it's the one that's... So, I will move to authorize the city clerk treasurer to decide the Niles Fund's awards based on the existing criteria, to ensure the applicant name stays confidential, and to provide the requisite annual accounting to the auditor and probate court.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, discussion on that motion.
Just a question, is that going to eliminate paying water bills?
I'm sorry, I kind of...
Is that going to eliminate the ability of the Niles Fund to pay water bills if you're summarily doing everything through the clerk treasurer on the medical criteria?
Well, the medical criteria is just one aspect.
Okay, so there are more aspects on that?
Yes, yes.
Those of us in, I didn't see the document, and it was online, so...
So, we have a motion and a second to approve, having clerk treasurer take care of, basically take care of everything. Discussion on that.
I just have one question about the interest rate, which is determining how much money you can give out. Who's watching the interest rate to make sure that we're getting the best interest rate all the time annually, or every five years, depending upon whether or not it's in a CD? And then more people could benefit, or they could get larger amounts of money more often.
The subject bank does the investments. They have three years, there's a principal fund, and it earns interest, and it goes into an income fund that also earns interest. So, you get interest off the principal and interest off the income. The interest, interest off the interest. And that's what we spend. If I get close to money, I call them up, say, send me a check of the interest account.
Are you monitoring how much interest they're, we're getting?
Well, we're getting whatever the investments call. Those funds are invested, they're not a CD.
Okay.
They're investments in the market. And whatever the market does, that's what we're getting.
Thank you.
Okay, is this for anyone, or is this just Newport?
This is gonna be a Newport resident, he's gotta be sixty years old.
Yeah, just Newport, sixty years old.
And it's for medical expenses only?
No.
Well, it's...
Says care, comfort, and...
And it says in order to be eligible for financial assistance, it must be city resident, sixty years old, for medical expenses, and then it goes into your income, and the expenses must have been incurred within the year, the limitation. There's nothing that says it covers anything but medical.
The opening paragraph does. That's just limiting the medical.
But, I mean, that's what... Don't you think that the line saying in order to be eligible for financial assistance, applicant must read, meet the following guidelines? Which means that it nulls and avoids the first sentence?
No, I think the opening paragraph sets it out, and isn't it from the original estate? And this isn't taxpayer dollars, this is an estate. Wasn't that taken from the original D?
You know, I would read it differently, but I'm not...
Because I believe number three, it's saying that, okay, if you have medical expenses, this is the criteria you have to meet for your medical expenses.
Yeah. As long as you have that clarified, I would...
Okay, then anything else? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, is that available online? One of the council members, we're going to, because of her talking?
It's online.
Yeah, I want you to sign that back.
It should be online with today's agenda with attachments.
Okay. Thank you.
So, if you would like a hard copy...
What's that?
I said if you would like a hard copy.
Oh, thank you, I wrote that down, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Jake. None for you?
You could technically drill my mouth. I've got it, I've got it. Well, I just wanted to make sure. And did you sign the right line, Mr. Ross?
Well, all the other blanks were filled in, so...
Because we have to pick on you for that.
I knew when I took this job that I couldn't read.
All right, moving on. Mr. Johnson, new business.
Yeah, okay. So, I've got a vendor permit here that needs to be approved, if you wish. The Boeing's here, this permit for a food wagon, sell fried chicken, hot dogs, hamburgers, and that type of thing, twenty-foot trailer. He'd like to use it to guide in the park, or where the marketplace is. And he's paid for a six-month, six-month application fee. He's got all the insurance papers, picture of the trailer, everything he needs is there. Got any questions, Carl, we're gonna answer.
I'll hit your answer for you.
Where's the marketplace?
The farmer's market, I was there Saturday.
Okay, so that...
What I'd like to do if I stay, can they close at two, if I can stay longer, you know, later? And I'd like to do whether they have the ballpark, or they have the games, you have your festivals here.
But it would be stationary in the farmer's market area?
No, it's, I pull a van. I'll stay for the day, then I take it home. You can't leave it, I can't leave it in the...
Those things, those things had to be removed at the end of each day.
Gotcha.
So, will you be following there, Patrick? You'll be there Wednesday and Saturday?
Well, no, because it all depends, because also I have other places, like someone wants a birthday party done, so I'll bring it to their house for a birthday party, this'll be this town, you know, I mean, the present, yeah. So, my intentions right now is just doing the farmer's market. Next week, this Saturday, I'm gonna help EDFW to do that three-hundred breakfast thing. So, and then a week after that, I'm in Florida for, so I won't be in the farmer's market, but I'm trying to get to the week after. And I also wanna talk to, or nothing to do with people, I wanna get to Derby Line Day, you know, and I'll get a, I'll get some business cards to go to different towns, and that's what my intentions are. My intentions is when I retire, just see what I'm gonna do. That's why I'm doing it now.
To try it out?
Oh, it's good to have a plan.
Yes.
And I haven't had dinner yet, I'm really hungry.
It's making me hungry, talking about it.
Yeah, I'm trying to sell it, I'm trying to buy the yard.
Can I, can I just clarify? You said you wanted to be there after the farmer's market is closed for the day?
They close, they close at two o'clock.
Uh-huh.
And, and they say you can stay after, but for me to do that, I need a permit here to stay after, because it's not after the farmer's market. It's by twenty-four o'clock.
You want us to come here once in a while in a six-month period?
I do, exactly what I mean.
Okay, right, well, because we had for a while, not last summer, last summer or the summer before, we had the Mexican, and they would be there every day.
The taco.
Taco, taco, yeah, the taco, that was there every day in, well, kind of, firm of, right there.
Yeah, I have a regular job, so it's just, it's just part-time thing for me, for the future.
Okay, so we would need a motion to approve the vendor's permit?
Subscribed.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded, discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you.
You still doing the Elks?
Huh?
Are you still doing the Elks?
Oh, the Pumline, the Elks?
Yeah.
Oh, it's really good stuff.
Other new business, Mr. Johnson?
No.
Thank you.
Good luck tomorrow, I'll have a signed copy for it.
What's that?
I'll sign it tomorrow, make it all out.
Okay.
Any new business? Any new business? I have a new business, new business, anything new? No? And we'll move to old business, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, so we need to act on a request for Niles Fund...
No, you can do that last year.
Well, that's right, never mind. Forget it, I'll take care of it.
Okay.
You want to see one of those ever?
Still little, that power video you had.
Any other old business?
Thanks for the reminder, buddy.
Yes.
No, at all.
Any old business?
No.
Any old business? I don't have anything, anything, anything? Anything? Um, just to let everyone know, of course, we have between three and four hundred combat veterans coming in on their motorcycles this weekend. It's the combat, Combat Veterans Club, is that what it's called?
Yeah, Combat Veterans Motorcycle Association.
Motorcycle Association. They're gonna start arriving Thursday, some of them, and then they'll be here through Sunday?
Through Sunday, yeah.
Through Sunday. And last count, I think, I was told...
We had close to four hundred sign up.
Right, close to four hundred signed up.
They're doing a lot, they're doing a lot of rides, I mean, they won't be at the region, I mean, some will be there all day long. At the point if they do all these rides, and they got a parade going at the Derby on... And if they do all these rides and they got a parade going at the Derby on, that, I think, that type of thing.
They do a lot, they do a lot to help veterans.
It's a regional meeting, it's an association, it's not a public one. I mean, they know a lot, but it's not a public one.
But there's gonna be a lot of people in town. We got the Aquafest, we have the street dance, we have the Aquafest, so there's a lot gonna be going on this weekend.
Don't forget the Fireman's Cornhole Tournament, right there. It's a big deal.
All right.
So, what, Joe, for traffic, there's gonna be a lot of two-wheelers racing around.
Are we distributing earplugs?
No. Well, I think, I just, because some of them made that way, not, you know, to, because they're supposed to be noticeable for vehicles, for cars. That's why they're not, that's the word. All right.
So maybe noticed on the little-
It's important to remember on this motorcycle deal, these are all combat veterans, they've all been in combat. Every, every motorcycle, not just ordinary motorcycles.
All right.
They're wholesome.
That's it? So now, the next council meeting will be August 5th at 6:30. We're also gonna have a public meeting on August 5th, right before the regular council meeting. It'll be on a solid waste implementation plan. And that's August 5th also. And now we need a motion to adjourn at 8:05. Motion made, is there a second? Seconded, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.